I just said that.
It's nice what it is.
I'm trying to have faith.
You're trying what?
Have faith.
You know what? Karma's slow. That's, that's really all we have.
I agree.
So, I'm all set. Not, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna sit back and tell you.
I understand.
For the consultant and everybody to do their work. Then you come to me and you tell me what it, what it is. Because at this point, I don't even know anymore.
Yeah, you're in a challenging spot.
However, I do know this. And for all of our students.
I agree. I think we all agree on that.
And that's all I'm asking for. And I'm not trying to be, but I'm just one overwhelmed.
I don't blame you.
And tired.
Uh huh.
All of it. People coming at me, you know, like.
I get it.
I expect to open my email from some, from her. And it's like, you know, and so I'm.
Good evening. Welcome to Town Hall. It is Thursday, March 3rd at 6:30 PM. This is a budget, budget work session between the Town Council and the School Committee. The first order of business is a pledge of the flag. Next on the agenda is a land acknowledgement statement, which I will read. The town of South Kingston pays homage to the indigenous people and land on which the town is now located. Let this acknowledgement serve as a reminder of our ongoing efforts to recognize, honor, reconcile, and partner with an arrogance of tribe whose land and water we benefit from today. Now, before we begin the meeting, I would just like to acknowledge that this is not a public hearing. This is a work session. We have not advertised it as such, and so we won't be soliciting comments from citizens tonight. We do have reserved meetings for public hearings, two of those in April. But with that said, we'll begin this meeting. I'd like to turn it over to the Town Manager, Terry Murphy.
Thank you, Council President McIntee. Welcome, everyone, this evening. I would like to just start briefly by going over a kind of a high-level overview of the budget process as it relates to the town. And then, this particular work session is specifically for the, the school department budget. So I will be handing it off to our school department administration. Once I run through, I'll give you a bit of frame of reference on the budget process and also the, the budget summary. So this is for the FY 2022, 2023 budget year. And this is the first work session of, of three that we will have between now and the end of next week. We have a schedule of meetings. You'll notice that in December, we started with a, with a preliminary hearing. We've made our way through the capital improvement program. And now we are in March where we are doing our public, excuse me, our work sessions to review the, the proposed budget. This evening is with the school committee and our school administration. There is the second one next Monday that is with the municipal side of the budget and departmental budgets. And then there is one on Wednesday, March 9th, which is with the human services and outside agencies. That is the schedule for the work sessions. And then Monday, March 21st, is the Town Council adoption of a preliminary budget. That's during a regular session of the Town Council. And then in April, there are two public hearings on the proposed FY 22, 23 budget. On Thursday, the 14th, and Monday, the 18th. Those are the, that's the process for meetings with regard to this budget. What I'd like to do is just give a brief overview of the complete municipal budget, which is in the budget document. That is, for those who are interested, it is posted online on the town website. And you can review the entirety of the document there. This evening, I will just be giving a, a framework for the entire budget. And next Monday will be a more in-depth look at the municipal side. So just to quickly run through this, you will see that the proposed expenditures for FY 22, 23 reflect the school fund proposing $62,247,950, which is an increase of $328,000 approximately over FY 21, 22. The general fund side is the municipal side of the budget, is $29,503,999. We have, the bulk of our revenue is property taxes, but we do have some non-property tax revenues. You will see that that is in the amount of $10,131,752. We're projecting about a 10% increase of non-property tax revenue for FY 22, 23. We're showing a proposed property tax levy in the amount of $75,745,61. That is a 2.2%, 2.26% increase from FY 21, 22. The proposed property tax transfer to the schools is $55,994,773. That is level funded from the current year. The proposed tax rate will see a decrease from $14.45 per thousand to $11.02 per thousand. That is directly related to the revaluation process that the town has just undergone. And that reflects 23.74% decrease from the current year. Very quickly, just a summary of expenditures. The first two accounts, obviously, are the, the great majority of the budget funding. There's a total expenditures by fund is $102,546,998. And you'll notice the funds that are here, you're, you may be familiar with, other than the school and the general fund. You see senior services, the guild, the rec center, water and wastewater and solid waste funds, and debt service. And these revenues reflect the same funds and are in the amount of $102,559,453. This evening, as I mentioned, this is the school committee budget work session. This is just a very high-level org chart of the, the school department and school committee operation. What we're showing here is a distribution of the property taxes. And you will see that for FY 22, 23, there is a distribution of 72.92% allocated to, proposed to be allocated to the school fund. And the general fund will see a 24.08% or is proposed at 24.08%. The remainder of the funds are the much smaller pieces of the separate funds. And this is just another look at the distribution of the property tax, which you can see here. Again, the school fund, which we are here to discuss tonight, is recommended to be level funded. And I will say that in my budget message, I did make a note that the reason at this point that that level funded, level funding is being recommended is, is simply that there are some unknown variables that still have yet to be determined. We've had conversations with the school administration. There has been immense progress in terms of the school committee and the school department establishing subcommittees to look at budget and redistricting and how they're going to move forward with facilities. And there's been great progress on that front. I think Dr. Pilata and Raquel can explain in more detail what that looks like. But from where, where I sit, the level funding simply is that there is not a full picture of what the fiscal impact is of the redistricting at this time. This is just a historic look at the school fund transfers. And you will see, this is the third year of the same amount of a, a proposed for the school fund transfer, FY 22, 23, at $55,994,773. This is just a, a look at the history of the property tax levy rate allocation. And you will see, over the years, it has fluctuated a, a bit. For FY 22, 23, we're looking at 26.42% allocated to the town and 73.5% allocated to the schools. This is just a pie chart that reflects all of the combined revenues of the, the entire municipal budget. And it breaks out, again, it just is a, really a visual of how the, how the pie is split for all, all funds, all revenues. And like I said, Dr. Pilata and, and Ms. Pellerin will get into the details of the school department expenditure statements and revenue statements. This is just a high-level look, which is in the municipal, with my budget document that was presented to the town by the school department. And the school department is proposing an operating, operating fund of $62,247,950 for FY 22, 23. And again, a look at the, the school proposed revenue statement for FY 22, 23. Again, you'll hear much more about this from Raquel and Dr. Pilata. So at this time, I will turn the presentation over to the school department. And this will take just a moment. We'll be switching laptops so that the presentation can be put up on our, on our screen. And for those folks at home watching, there may be just a little bit of a pause before your screens.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Okay. So Terry, that $11.02, the $11.02 for the property tax rate while we're switching over. That's a, a number that is new to the community, 14.45, the tax rate. We all understood that. So when you present a new number, it doesn't make sense. In some ways, it doesn't translate. So what would the property tax be if the budget was based on that, on the budget that you have now? So is it 14.53? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I do see what you're saying.
I don't know how to explain it articulately.
I don't have that calculation. I know what you're asking. And I will, I will say that we are prepared to.
Monday?
On Monday, to give scenarios of what that looks like. What the impact of the revaluation process has been, how that has, reflects in the budget this year.
It's just, if you say your new tax rate is 11.02, people don't understand that that's based on the new revows. But if we submitted this budget without that revaluation, my question is, is it 14.52?
Right.
Is, I mean, is it 14?
Yeah. We can, we can, we can present that to you.
Yeah, thank you.
With the calculation.
Ales back of the envelope, 14.77. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, the school committee, Terry, Zach. I just have an opening statement, kind of giving an executive summary, and then we'll have a PowerPoint presentation. FY 22, 23 school budget represents the school committee and school districts continuing effort to improve teaching and learning and improve the school's infrastructure while balancing the needs of taxpayers. The school committee adopted a three-year plan. Within that three-year plan, two schools are recommended to close. Curtis Corner is recommended to close in the year 23, 24. And Wakefield is scheduled to close in FY 24, 25. The motion to approve the three-year plan included hiring a consultant to redraw the boundary lines and implement a redistricting plan for the FY 22, 23 school year. Additionally, the school committee hired an educational facilities planner, Studio Jade, to conduct a needs assessment, create a master plan, and prepare a ride necessity of construction stages one and two. Prior to hiring the educational facilities planner, the school committee set up four subcommittees: budgeting, strategic planning, building, and redistricting. Subcommittee members included administrators, teachers, support staff, community members, parents, and members of the school committee. There were a total of 41 subcommittee members. Multiple public meetings were held with each of the subcommittees, including multiple public school committee meetings. The intent of the subcommittees was to gather and provide information to the school committee in order to have the school committee adopt a plan, which they did, which is the three-year plan I referenced. Over the last six months, the following objectives have been achieved. School committee established the four ongoing subcommittees to gather critical data and work closely with the educational facilities planner and the attendance zone redistricting consultant. School committee contracted an educational facilities planner to conduct an infrastructure needs assessment and create a master plan. School committee adopted a three-year RFP for a consultant to rezone and redistrict the school boundary lines effective for the 22, 23 school year. School committee also adopted a six-year capital budget. Every school has a school improvement plan, which is included in the budget that you have. The district also has a, a district improvement plan, which is included in the budget that you have. And the school committee has established goals, which is included in the FY 22, 23 budget. The FY 22, 23 school budget of $69,176,817 includes a municipal request of $56,510,850, which represents an increase of $516,077 over last year's municipal appropriation, which represents a little less than 1%. Formulating the 22, 23 school budget of $69,176,817 included the following. The FY 23 school budget includes the use of school department fund balance, the use of various grants and state aid. There are staff reductions. In FY 21, 22, total staff within the school department was 460.5. In our proposed FY 22, 23 budget, total staff is 442.2, reduction staff of 18.3. The budget has expenditure detailed by line item and object code. The budget also includes enrollment projections and staffing projections. The budget also includes our contractual obligations for the coming school year. And the budget includes fiscal management goals. And lastly, this budget took into consideration the closing of two schools over three years. For example, we made decisions to not purchase certain items under the category of equipment, supplies, and furniture. Knowing two schools were closing, we could transfer furniture, equipment, and supplies to other schools. One last thing I would say is that we are continuing to look at our staffing. There is a, a strong potential that our staffing will continue to be reduced. We're in the process of looking at each school class by class relative to staffing. So that staffing recommendation could possibly go up, which would allow our request for the appropriation to go down. Thank you. At this time, we'll have a PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening. We're just going to walk you through high level of the financials within the budget. What we'll do is we'll walk you through our budget development process and preparation, which focuses on, as Dr. Pilata talked about, the formation of the subcommittees and what they accomplished. The new, there is a new law regarding budgeting, sorry, and the focus on school improvement teams and principals on budget development. And that's under the education accountability law that took place in 2019. And also how we finalized the budget when we came from a $2 million budget gap to where we are today. We'll also high-level review the revenues that are in the, the budget with our major funding sources, our use of fund balance, and a little bit about our federal grant funds. And then we will go into the expenditure section, which we'll talk about our increases and our reductions. So just a little bit about our subcommittees and how we bring it all together in the budgeting process. Our budget subcommittee really looked at a deep dive into the regulations and the laws and the changes that have taken place from 2019 to now. We looked at our current policies and we actually did, I think it was adopted in January, a change of the budget development statement, which really focused on our actual budget that we have here tonight, the reporting that we will have monthly, and also the need for us to focus on procedures. And the agreement with the budget subcommittee is we would continue to meet throughout the fiscal year. Because it's not just, it doesn't end with the adoption of the budget. It goes on throughout the entire fiscal year. The building subcommittee is currently working with Studio Jade. They're in the process of finalizing the facilities assessment report. As we go through the budget, we'll talk a little bit about Article 9. And we'll come back to the council when that's finalized and tell you where we're at, meeting that requirement. The strategic planning subcommittee is working on right now on the development of our strategic plan. And our redistricting subcommittee was charged with bringing three options forward. And the school committee voted on that. And as Dr. Pilata touched on in his opening statement, we will have the consultant onboard. And the hope is that they would have the completion of the report by April 12th. So this is the change that happened as part of the Education Accountability Act in 2019. Full implementation is August 2021. It really changed the way that budgets were developed. So there's an overall district development and district needs, and Gina will talk a little bit about that. But when we get to school-specific, it's deeply embedded in the school improvement plan. So the school improvement plan is developed with the school improvement teams. From that, with a deep dive into data, the principals work with the school improvement team to develop the budget. This budget, when you're looking at the line items, it is very detailed. The school committee can talk to that, very detailed with the development. The reason for that is when we're going into the actual, I think it is August 2022, we wrote out an Department of Education is actually going to have us link these expenditures to the BEP and student outcomes. So when the school principals develop their budget, it came very detailed to the superintendent. We looked at it, and then what we did is we went back and said, at this point, we're $2 million over. Let's go back to the principals, see where they can reduce. It came back to the superintendent, who then presented it to the school committee for adoption. Maybe Gina can talk a little bit about the specifics on how we develop the overall district expenditures.
Could you, would you mind just clarifying for people listening who might not know what BEP is?
BEP is the Basic Education Program. It is really the core of what we do and the requirements that we must follow to educate all students.
At the district level, as the principals had dug into their data, their school-level data, we were also taking a look at what that was district-wide. And what we do see is we definitely have learning loss due to the pandemic.
Gina, can you just bring it closer to you? Thank you.
So at the district level, we also dug into data and analyzed our students' achievement data as well as attendance data to see where our students were, to determine what they needed moving forward. So due to the pandemic, we definitely noticed there is some learning loss. If you take a look at our data in 1819 to compare, compared to where we are this school year. So not only do we see a definitely strong need to address our math achievement, as 20% of our students are proficient in math at the elementary and middle level, we are also seeing big gaps, opportunity gaps with our students from, with social, I'm sorry, with our students with disabilities compared to students without disabilities. There's a substantial gap there that we have to close. Also with our multi-language learners and with students that are economically disadvantaged. So by digging into that data, that, that gives us the ground, the data for us to, to focus on where we will spend our different funding streams and focusing on math and reading and social-emotional learning.
So as we talked a little bit about before, when we first built the budget with the principals, the gap with revenue was over $2 million. So what the principals did is they went back and worked with their teams to see how they could reduce. They looked at every expenditure first, came forward with reductions to the expenditure side before they looked at their staffing. We looked at the staffing part of it. They really worked with their teams. It was a huge task coming forward, but they did it. And it was, it's a huge shift, and I want to acknowledge that for principals to go from doing things very differently to going to this new law, which requires them to really build their entire budget based on the data that they work with their school improvement teams. And, and they did an amazing job. So the next thing that we did, and we'll talk a little bit about on the next slide, is how we arrived at those staffing reductions. What also came about in our budget discussions was the vote on redistricting. So we have some preliminary reductions in there. And as Dr. Pilata talked about, our consultants coming onboard. We'll know more when the consultant comes onboard, actually what that looks like. So we did make some preliminary recommendations with reductions that are included. And as Dr. Pilata also said, we expect to have more information in April that could result in additional reductions. I'm going to talk a little bit and then hand it over to Gina. We also looked at maximizing all our grant funds. And we had the ability to use ESR. And what that did is, when you're looking at even the school improvement plans, a lot of it had to do with learning loss due to the pandemic. So we were fortunate enough to have the second part of ESR 2 and ESR 3. It is restricted on what we can spend it on, and I'll have Gina talk a little bit about that. But the focus is social-emotional and learning loss.
So with our grant funding, what you'll see is, you'll see that there are some positions in there. But these positions are specific to what the criteria of the grants are to address learning loss. So there are two math coaches that will work at the elementary level to target the support for our elementary grades of math learning loss and also behavior coaches to support with social-emotional learning. You'll see that we've used these grant funds to support and expand our summer learning program. So they've allowed us to go into further summer sessions, summer years, two more years out. And it's inclusive of the wraparound services. So we are hoping to expand, expand those wraparound services. And when I say that, that means like those camps that go after that academic half-day. So that way, we can actually offer a full-day summer camp experience. Also using those grants to fund some of these state mandates that are unfunded, such as professional learning for science of reading. So we still have about 80 teachers that need to get trained. We've done, I believe, 37 so far. And also, in addition to the science of reading training that we are required to do, we're using some of these grants to actually off additional, offer additional training for our reading teachers. Some are already currently in the URI dyslexia program, and some have opted to do OG training, which will be offered to them next year. So this way, we would not have to utilize consultants. We'd have reading teachers on the ground with these certifications.
And the OG, that's Orton-Gillingham for dyslexia?
Yes, thank you.
So looking at all that, that's how we brought it to the budget that you have here tonight. Now, we're going to bring you through a little bit about the revenue that we use to support it, and then we'll dig into the expenditures. it, and then we'll dig into the expenditures. The major funding sources for this budget are municipal appropriation for education and state aid. A little bit about the state aid that I wanted to talk about is we are in the second year of what the governor considers hold harmless. In the current year that we're in, 2122, we were held harmless for the reduction of students. So they used the same data pool from before the pandemic, and they still, we were still able to get a little more money because the actual core dollar amount increased. This year, we're being held harmless for reduction of state aid. So when you're looking at that, you can see that it's the exact same foundation aid that we got last year. But we want to be realistic about what that means. If the governor's budget does not go through withhold harmless, we will lose anywhere between 892,000 and 977,000, and that is due to the reduction in enrollment of 126 students. I do want to point out that this is based on March 21 data. The new data that will be coming out will be pulled probably somewhere around March 17th. We pulled the data, which is residential average daily membership. We pulled the data a few days ago, and it is trending down another 100 students. So I just want to make that aware. And what that means for us when we're coming into 2024 is we will at least be reduced by that amount and probably more. And that's what we're talking about, something called the funding cliff. So the benefit on the expenditure side is that, is that is when we're scheduled to close a school, which would offset the cost and the reduction of state aid. On the municipal side, so we're looking, as Dr. Palata said, a .9 increase, that's That is expenditure increases about $328,000, and the offset, net offset, is our use of fund balance as we no longer have those one-time expenditures. Well, I brought a graph this time to talk about fund balance. I just wanted to say that from the last time we met until now, we establish our budget development policy, which includes the school committee's assignment of fund balance. What we're doing is walking you through how it started in 2020 to where it ended in 2021, which is an audited balance, reducing out the expenditures for the one-time use of fund balance for expenditures in general funds and capital in the current year, and also pointing out that $869,000 of our fund balance is being put back into the budget. 621 solely supports capital with $247,000 in our general fund for one-time expenditures for contractual agreements that are ending within the fiscal year. That leaves us with 1.5 million. Out of that 1.5, part of our policy is that we would set aside dollars for unanticipated high costs in special education. So it's a little over $400,000. What that means is if we have a student comes in that's high cost, we're not cutting within the budget, nor are we coming back and asking the council for money. We would then appropriate those dollars with a vote of the school committee. That leaves us with a balance for emergencies or additional capital that we may have to talk about when we get the facility study back to meet Article 9 of about 1.8% of fund balance, 1.8% of the general fund, and that's part of our policy. And then the third major funding source that we have in the budget is our grants. New to the grants this year are our ESR funds. Gina can focus a little bit about just the restrictions that come with, and CRP means Consolidated Research Program. I know the school department uses like the alphabet soup of acronyms, and it's really hard because we live it every day, but I know the general public doesn't know what that means, so I just wanted to point that out. So with the federal grants, they are very restrictive, and I'll just highlight ESR 2 and 3. The criteria for that is data has to be analyzed, and you have to identify what, exactly what it is that you identify as your growth, setting a SMART goal, and the metrics are constantly, are monitored throughout the period. So for ESR 3, for example, the two math, there are additional two math teachers, not the math coaches I spoke about, but at the middle school level specifically, they are doing targeted support for missed units of study from this school year. So the two principals of those two middle schools have already identified because of COVID, they know that there were some missed units of study, so those teachers would be an additional class to target those specific units. For example, geometry is one of the school levels. So with that, data has to back up, that if we're going to say this is the intervention that we are using to close those gaps, then we have to then follow through with these grants with the data to support that this actually did work. So there's, they are very restrictive, so it's not like we could take something from the general fund and just move it to a grant. Looking at the overall pie chart, you're going to see that 82% of the budget is municipal appropriation for education, and 7% is state aid. As we talked about before, any increase in any expenditures, if we can't fit it in with the restricted grants, must come into general fund, and the majority of it is supported by municipal appropriations. Now, we're going to jump onto the expenditure side. So I just wanted to point out that on the expenditure side of the school department, there are items that are non-negotiables that were required by law to fund, so that would be, were required to fund any collective bargaining agreements, transportation, out-of-district costs for school of choice, as well as special education. But there are also items in the budget that we have to meet a target, and so those we consider our maintenance of effort. So 3% this year of the general operational budget has to be spent on annual maintenance. And again, we'll be finalizing this when the consultant comes back, so we have actual reporting data to base our maintenance budget on. The next is something that is, is going to be coming forward, as I talked a little bit about before. In August of 2022 is when Rhode Island Department of Education is going to start to pull our data and make sure that we're meeting the requirements of the Basic Education Plan. So we must, on the school side, meet all the requirements of the Basic Education Plan, and now RIDE is going to analyze our data, which we call UCOA data, or Uniform Chart of Accounts, actually pull the expenditures and link it to the Basic Education Plan as well as student outcomes. They're mirroring this on Massachusetts way of pulling all data together, so this is going to be a huge task going forward. The hope is we'll be able to analyze all districts and really look at how they're doing it and how they're meeting student achievement and how they're spending their expenditures. And we're also required by federal law to meet maintenance of effort with regards to special education. So there's a four-part test that we must pass, and its very general part is you have to spend as much as you spent last year on a special education, and that, that's also verified by pulling our data from the Uniform Chart of Accounts. So the budget is built differently this way, and it's built for that reason, because going forward, they'll be analyzing the data. Looking at our increases in the budget, we had all our contractual increases. Where now, we talked to the trust recently, and we're aligning town and school, that 4.5% will be an increase in health, 3% in dental. We will continue to watch that to see if it can be brought down anymore or when we get the final figures. We have our increases in pension. As Gina talked about, we have the grant funding that is restricted to social emotional learning loss that actually generated seven additional positions, but they're restricted to, as Gina talked about, math specialists. And when the grant funds go away, the positions go away as well. We looked at the decrease in staffing due to our redistricting plan, and also based on our enrollment and the funding. So I want to talk a little bit about this net 18, so I can explain that. When the principals looked at staffing, as well as we looked at central administration and support staff, the reduction was 23.9. We brought back six positions specifically for the pre-K program at Wakefield, and so that's how it's netted out to the 18. And again, seven additional positions were brought on for grants, and they will go away when the ESR funds go away. So when you're looking at the net 18, that was the majority of how we closed the gap of the $2 million. On the non-employee and benefits side, we have a 4% contractual increase in local transportation. We put in an estimated increase for statewide, but this is a huge variable, and we're constantly looking to the state to see if that cost can be capped. I know there is legislation out there to look at it, and we'll continue to, to see if we can, you know, work with other districts to get that cost down because it is, it is very expensive. We have our estimated tuition costs. I mean, that is based on what we know now. We'll know after the lottery happens and acceptance are coming forward, we'll know what we're looking at there. We also have our increases and decreases for our out-of-district costs, and again, we have fund balance set aside if something happens. I know Gina wants to talk a little bit about the unfunded mandates that we have and how we're funding them. Again, our concern is Article 9, making sure we meet those requirements. And again, a huge task for the principals and directors to come forward in what, what they did, and it's how we close the gap from 2 million coming forward with an increase of about half a million. As I mentioned before, one of the heavier lifts for us is the professional development for the science of reading. And the other piece behind that is we are required to have, what RIDE is saying, high-quality resources for math, ELA, and then in 2025 for science. So by the close of this school year, we would have identified and been prepared, and prepared to purchase ELA and math resources that will have high-quality K-12, so opening the next school year, we'll meet that. But again, that's an unfunded mandate required by RIDE that we have these resources. The rationale behind that, just for clarity, if a school district does not have 75% of their students proficient in math and in ELA, and there are no student subgroups, that there's a gap, an opportunity gap, they could choose whatever they want for their resources. But since that is not us today, we are required to pick from those resource lists, and we Again, 74% of our budget is for employee compensation. That is our salary and benefits for our staff, including all contractual agreements. 18% is the next percentage that we have, and that's our other purchased services, and the majority of that is our transportation and tuition cost. There isn't much left after that, and I just wanted to point out again that we're required and mandated by law to fund a lot of things that are non-negotiable. So this is the summary that you have in the document that we had given out to the council. It brings us down to, as Dr. Palata said, the $69 million budget that we have, which is a 4.8% increase from prior years, and really the majority of that is bringing the ESR funds into the, into the budget. Our general fund budget is actually 0.53% increase from prior year, and really that is $328,000. So all of that coming together is the increase in the general fund. Why we need the $500,000 again is we have the net loss of revenue. That together is why we're requesting that $500,000 from the town. Again, just wanted to pull back and say that we did start the process with a 2 million gap. We worked really hard to get it to where we are tonight, but we do have some next steps that we want to talk about. We're waiting for the completion of the redistricting study, and that will really give us a solid idea of where we're at with redistricting. And just to go back to the, you know, the beginning, what Dr. Palata said, when we know that, we'll know if we'll be able to increase any more staff and really what that looks like. Because there's, there also is another part of it, this budget doesn't include an increase in transportation with regards to redistricting, so that may have an impact, positive or negative, and really waiting for the consultant to bring that forward to give us more information. Looking at our facility requirements, when we have that study completed, we will know where we are with regards to Article 9. At that point, we will work with town administration and Rhode Island Department of Education to say, what can we count towards the maintenance requirement? What does it look like with the current approved Stage 2 that we have? And what are our options? We want to be able to get the information from all sources before we bring it forward, and we'll have a better idea at that point. Continue to monitor the governor's budget. Again, hold harmless is in the budget. Hold harmless means for this year that there is no reduction in state aid. If that doesn't happen, we will be losing money from state aid from about 892 to 977. Again, in 2024 is when we're going to see that cliff. I would say that it will be a substantial reduction if there is no change to the funding formula, so throughout the fiscal year, we'll be monitoring that and what that looks like. We're again committed to working with these town administration and the town council for exploring possible ideas of cost savings, and we'll provide every update that we can on the budget.
Thank you, Raquel, Gina. Any questions up here from the members? Go ahead, Deb.
On Monday, some resident came to the podium and asked a couple of questions. They were looking for the audit that you publish every year, and he also said that you hadn't put out any financial statements since April 21. So the community is looking for an update in general about where you're at. Could you speak to that?
So the last, so the audits were just, they're on the town's website, I believe. The audits are up there, so they are posted. There was a delay that we had with our financial statements. I don't believe it was April, because what we did is we focused on our current budget. And I will tell you, there's a lot of changes to the way that we're reporting. We're reporting straight from the financial system. We are encumbering all salary and benefits, which is a shift to us, that it provides us with really knowing where we're at. We're working at the subcommittee level to dig deep into everything. We did have to put off budget amendments for a little bit to focus on the huge change in budgeting. We're scheduled to have a budget subcommittee the week of the 14th, which is bringing budget amendments forward, and our financials for February will be posted at the next meeting, as well as a very detailed of where we're at. Unfortunately, some things pulled back. We are somewhat short-staffed, but make, I make a promise that we're back on track.
I'm just relaying, I know you-
I know I've heard it.
I know on Monday, you probably had much more fun things to do, but that's what was brought to the, so I feel like it would be remiss if I didn't-
No, I appreciate that, and I have heard that myself, so, thank you.
Okay. Abel?
So I'm just thinking of questions that community members might have. So you have in here projected funding for out-of-district students, so students who might be going to charter schools, student who might be going to career in tech. And then in the fund balance, you also have $400,000 that you set aside for high-cost out-of-district. Can you, just for the community, explain the difference between the out-of-district students and that high-cost special education?
Sure. So the tuitions that we must pay for are any student that is out of district that has a specialized service. Those are, or tend to be, significant cost. You could have a student that comes into district that may attend Meeting Street, and that is over $100,000. The reason we set aside funds for that is when a student comes in, based on their disability and their need, they need, may need one-on-one supports with nursing, they may need transportation. Now you're bringing that $100,000 up to about $200,000. Set aside for fund balance is to say- Set aside for fund balance is to say, at that point, what options would we have if they came in? And we didn't budget for that. We would need to either reduce the budget further or come back and ask the town for more money. We're setting aside those dollars so that we don't have to do that, but also know that now going forward, we have to fund that. The other tuitions that we have to pay for are schools of choice. So there are students that choose to go to CTE programs in other districts, and there are students that choose to go to charter or state schools. We're mandated to pay a tuition cost. That tuition cost is different from special education. It is the local appropriation that supports the schools that go directly. It is meant to say that the funding, whether it is state or local, follows the student. So that's the tuition cost with that. We don't see much of a variation, or it isn't, you know, amount to anything like $100,000, $200,000. It's more of $16,000 to $20,000. And that's something that we think we can absorb in the budget. If there was a huge, you know, shift, then we would bring that forward under the emergency with fund balance. But we set aside money for special education in fund balance because it tends to be significant, and it is something that is unplanned.
So just to put into perspective, you could potentially have two students move into the district in need of high-cost special education, or they would need to be sent out of district to receive those services. And just two students would eat up that $400,000 that could happen.
That is a very real possibility. One other thing is that you have DCYF placements. They go by per-pupil cost, and right now, that is $160,000.
I would just add one other important point to your question. If a child is placed by DCYF in a special placement, we're required to pay that educational cost, and we don't have anything to say about that.
So you talked about the opportunity gaps. And I'm just wondering, over the last few years, have those gaps been widening, shrinking?
Actually, taking a look from 2018, 19 to this last state assessment, they actually have been decreasing. So that we're heading in the right direction. So that was very pleasing to see. And then if we think about what the strategies are that we've implemented this year, for example, principals have been really strategic about how they've developed their schedules so that way grade-level teams can meet, analyze data, and really give strategic support to all students. So I'm really hopeful for what our spring data will tell us, too.
Excuse me, just following up on that. So in the current budget, those programs that we feel like have been shrinking those gaps, those programs have been maintained in the current budget?
So those were just this, I'm going to say the regular school day, but what has shifted is because we definitely need to close them and accelerate that. So yes, they're closing, but not as quickly as we need them to close. And the other piece is that we see just students across the board. And granted, it could totally be, you know, for COVID, learning loss, and we can see that they'll accelerate quickly. But we do have to get those targeted supports because as they're progressing through the grade levels, we don't want to have those gaps get larger. We definitely want to shrink and give targeted support.
Raquel, I got a question for you in regard to the annual maintenance statute here. I understand it offers three different options as to quantify that amount. Have you sort of looked at that, quantified that, and figured out which one is best or most feasible for the school district?
With regards to Article 9 with the maintenance requirements?
Yes.
No, actually, I have not. I'm really waiting. There's a lot of changes. I want to make sure that we have the data. So when the facilities assessment comes forward, I think it's best if town and school talk to RIDE. Because there's so many things that we really don't understand. So how do you calculate this? You know, what does it look like square footage? What does it look like with, you know, the dollar amount for replacement? So at this point, I haven't, but we will be exploring everything. Also, looking at what you can count on municipal side or school side as a deduction to maintenance of effort. When you're looking at that, it would be, you know, we were counting on the bond coming through now that it's not here, and we're looking at 1 point something million being spent on maintenance. I know that RIDE has talked about what you can count, you know, the director of facilities for that. Is that still valid? That's what we're looking at. So my goal is to have the facilities assessment, meet with RIDE, with town administration, and explore all options, and at that point, bring it forward so that we really have real factual data instead of assumptions.
Safe to say that the broad category of expenses that fit within that is easy to achieve for you guys from a budgeting perspective, to meet that 3%?
I think it is, as long as we can count debt service. That's what we're looking at. There is a difference of opinion with regards to debt service. So can you count? If you're counting it the first time, can you count interest? You know, there have been, the larger districts have said that that is unfair. We should be able to count more when it's, you know, debt service. And so I want to get some clarification on that. If that's the case, then that's the first thing that we do. We look at debt service and say, here's the reduction. Then shift to expenses. You don't want to build expenses in just to meet a requirement. I don't think that's the right thing to do. So that's, you know, that's my main focus when I get that study back.
Thank you. I want to talk a little bit about transportation. I know that's always a challenge here. It looks like you've identified that 4% increase in transportation is what will be exhibited this year. You also alluded to the potential for increase in transportation as a result of the redistricting or potential reduction. Is that what we do expect? An increase in transportation as a result of the redistricting?
You know, I really, I don't know until I see that study. So what we're going to do, they're all based on, you know, data inputs. So there's a, Versitran is a program that the actual transportation company has. So when they get the data on where students are, they're going to populate that in, and we're going to have options on whether we do, where the stops are, how many students on a bus. That will give us, you know, really what it is. There's such a change now because there's a lot of restrictions coming off with regards to COVID. For the past two years, there had to be so much with ridership. That's going away now, so that plays into the number of buses that we'll need. So it's not so much looking at. We know we have a 4% contractual increase, you know, on per bus, but what does the number of buses looks like? There's also the exploration of, right now, when we look at the busing, we're basing that on enrollment. And now we have to look on basis of ridership. What does that look like versus basing buses on enrollment versus ridership? So that's another exploration to look at. So we'll be doing that and doing a deep dive with the redistricting consultant to give us all options.
Thank you. I finally want to ask you about this hold harmless here. Now, presumably, obviously, this budget is built around the presumption that the hold harmless will still be in place here. But theoretically, the state doesn't enact their budget until June. Now, so we'll obviously be moving forward under that assumption or not. But it seems to me that every, you know, state rep or state senator that is representing a district that has a decline in enrollment will support the hold harmless. But how does it work the other way for the schools that are exhibiting increases in school enrollment?
So based on what I've seen, what they're doing is taking a look at the past two years and saying, so it's the highest of the two years. So if a district had an increase in enrollment, they would base it on the increase. So there are districts that, Barrington, that would get that increase. They wouldn't be, they wouldn't lose at all. It really is meant to protect districts that had the loss. Again, it's a one-year fix. We've been living off hold harmless for two years. And when you're looking at a district like South Kingstown that has declining enrollment, the impact will be severe in 2024. So the planning that we're doing now, as Dr. Pallada said, looking at the closing of schools, is real. We wouldn't be able to survive without making those reductions with looking at that significant loss in state aid.
Thank you, Raquel.
So I just have a question about the studies that Studio Jade are doing. You have April 12 for the redistricting. When do you expect the facilities study?
You're not talking about redistricting, you're talking about the facilities. We don't have a timeline for that, but we do have to meet timelines for RIDE. I think in order for us to meet the timeline for RIDE, we have to have a plan in place, I think by February, or September of this year, for February, was that it? September of this year, we'd have to have a plan that we would submit to RIDE. So they're bound by that timeline. So they'd have to complete their work to meet that timeline.
Just one question on the August, when RIDE begins to examine your accounts in August, right? So you mentioned UCOA. Are they standardized account numbers now across all the districts so we can look at apples to apples, or what's happening there? What do we think?
That's such a good question. No. There, I'm very vocal on the executive, I'm in the executive board with the business managers. And there are so many disclaimers that are going to have to be put out there when you're analyzing district to district. You could have a district that has, you know, right now, capital is accounted for on a municipal side where there are other districts that account for capital on the school side. We're now just established a capital fund. That all makes a difference on what we're doing. I may have an interpretation. I'm so UCOA by the book, but my neighbors could interpret it differently or really not be so involved with it. Now we're analyzing data, and we're having these data dashboards, and it's unfair. That being said, I looked, Gina and I were somewhat horrified when we were looking at the law saying that it is going to happen in August 2022. We immediately got on the pilot program so that we can have a voice and say that you have to be very careful with the data you put out there. It means a lot to people. And if you're going to start linking UCOA data to student outcomes, where is the ability to make sure we get it right? They do an annual audit, but it's just a random sampling. The stakes are high with this. When we were talking to them just last week, there was, you know, some talk about having the implementation set off. But I know that the governor and the General Assembly really wants to see this data. It's a long time coming to be able to bring it together. It has been adopted into law with that deadline, so, you know, more to come.
Well, thank you for your advocacy in trying to, you know, get something standardized there. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Wor. So from the community's perspective, last year, the budget created by some of you and not all of you was about $1.1 million increase in funding. We ended up working with you, and at the April meeting, you came back and you were closer. You were around, you had reduced some expenditures, and your ask was about four something. The council voted 3 to 2, we level-funded you. But then by the end of your fiscal year, you actually reported a $300,000 surplus. So when the community kind of walks through that, this ask all of a sudden melted away, and you ended up with $300,000 extra. Fast forward a year, this very professional budget created, you know, I understand how complex it is and how many different factors. Your ask is now 512 more, and you've alluded to potentially some reduction. Staffing could come in April, potentially some transportation, sort of, that's a wild card. What could the community really expect? Because we want to trust that the budget is developed in a way that's accurate, but possibly, we're all skeptical because last year, when you were level-funded, you finished with the surplus.
So I wasn't here in 20, I'm not really sure about 2021, how the budget was, so I can't speak to that. But I can speak to the ending part of it of $300,000. On a $60 million budget, if I'm ending with zero, then either I belong in Washington or I'm doing something wrong.
Powerball ticket.
But, you know, you put controls in place. And with the current budget that we're in, what we're doing is making sure, you know, there are mechanisms that you can do. One thing that we're doing now is making sure that everything is encumbered. And I know that is a strange word to people. And what that is, is when you're looking at your salaries and benefits, it's the majority of the budget. You want to make sure that financial reporting, and this is why the delay is happening, is accurate. It is, you're looking at real-time budgeting and real-time balances. And that's going to give us the idea to do what we need to do better. It's not a quick fix right away. It takes a long time. But when it's done, and it's transparent, and it's out there, everyone can see. Now we're, we budgeted this, there's, you know, a balance in this. And working with our policy, now we have controls in place that says that anything that's over a certain dollar amount, we have to bring forward to school committee for a budget adjustment. We also put into place that, and you know, I am sensitive to the fact that when you're ending with a surplus, that in a town where it is heavily town appropriation, you want to put that back into the budget before you come and ask for anything else. And that's why our policy says that when we have an audit and we end with a dollar amount, we bring it forward to school committee, and it's appropriated back into the budget as you see now before we ask for anything else. I'm not really sure where we're going to end the year now. But again, I will say that there are line items that we're going to talk about at the subcommittee that we were already over, and that is substitute lines. We have to look at, why is that? You know, and be able to explain why we're doing what we're doing. And if there's a need to ask for more money, we wouldn't do that now. We would do that in the end of the year when we really know that we need it. And again, if we do end with a surplus because we are making sure that, you know, we're spending on what we need, we would again put that right back into the budget. So budgeting is tough. And again, I will say, if I ended at zero, I belong someplace else.
I agree. So I have another question. The community chatter, you know, we say, maintenance of effort, maintenance of effort, blah, blah, blah. So there's, as I understand it, and please educate me and the rest of the community, we could do maintenance of effort, which is giving you the same amount of money, again, that you got last year. But there is another way to fund the schools, which reflects the declining enrollment. So could you please explain what the per-pupil transfer would be if option other was used?
I'm going to try.
But think about it like you're talking to-
I know.
Not MBA-level people.
No, I know. We talked about this before.
Yeah.
So you are right. But the law says, and I will say that Zach and I talked, we had a very robust conversation with RIDE about this last year. It has never been done, and I'm going to explain why. When you're looking at per-pupil, and there is a reduction in enrollment, it's a calculation that is done first on revenue. So you're taking the residential average daily membership from, if we were in '22, you'd have to take average daily membership from '20 and '21 and get the difference. Then you have to take the town appropriation from '21, divided over by number of students to get a per pupil for town appropriation. Timing that out, that is the maximum reduction that you could reduce a school department. Then you have to flip to the expenditure side. That's just maintenance of effort from a municipal side. Then on the expenditure side, you have to work with Rhode Island Department of Education to say, a school department has to look at the entire budget, local, state, and federal dollars that come in, and now you have to build all the requirements for the expenditure. They first look at all mandates by law, so special education has to be brought in, transportation has to be brought in, we're required to fund all collective bargaining agreements, and the big one is the BEP. So they would have to go through all our expenses to say, are you meeting everything? And that dollar amount that's left would be the only thing that can be reduced. So then you'd have to look at the dollar amount that you have with revenue and the dollar amount in expenses and get RIDE's approval that that is actually discretionary expenditures that you can reduce. So it's not as simple as taking that and doing that, it's much more, and I hope that made sense.
So I'm going to say it, and you know, I think you're going to, for example, say 100 students less every year, simple math, $25,000 per student, $250,000, that would be the reduction on the revenue side. 25 million? 2.5? See, yeah. So it would be 2.5 million, 2.5 million on the expenses, and then revenue.
Yes.
And then, then you're going to stack up all the other required things, right? So this 55 over here minus 2.5 becomes 53 and a half, right?
Yeah.
And then, so then you have to add up all the expenses over here, and if they came to 53, it would be a wash.
It's the entire budget coming together. So they'd have to look at the entire 69 million and say, okay, these are restricted costs to grants, that gets set aside, this gets set aside here. Now you're looking at the general operational budget and saying, what can you not cut? And I will say that with the BEP, it's the majority of what we do. So if you were saying to me right now, could we cut the budget by 2.5 and meet all the mandates and requirements? No, we wouldn't be. So that wouldn't be realistic, but what could you reduce? That is really something that is up to RIDE's interpretation with looking and analyzing our expenses at that point, to say, this is the point where a school department is not meeting mandates, law, or requirements. You cannot reduce them. There is actually the new law, the basic, I think I wrote it down somewhere, 16 something, but I'll get that to you, actually says, when they assess the BEP, starting in August 2022, if a district is not meeting the BEP, regardless of the way you're funding them, you know, whether you're doing the calculation per pupil or just giving them a straight dollar amount, Department of Revenue now gets involved, and they assess the community to see if the community has the ability to pay the school department those dollars. So that's very new. So that is another whole thing that comes into play. There's, again, there's a lot more to it.
Yes, I understand. I think a lot of people throw out, why don't we just pay, reduce by the per pupil and do that? And so I'm hoping that by explaining it on the camera, that people have a better sense of that. I don't certainly want to go into that rat's nest of problems, because I think it's much simpler to just level fund and say, here you go, and not get into this reduction by per pupil. That's just me. I just wanted to explain it to the, have it explained to the community. Thank you.
It's 16-24-34.
The Powerball numbers you're going to play?
I should.
You should. Thank you, Raquel, I appreciate it.
Any other questions from the members at this time? All right, we'll open it up to the school committee members if you have any questions or comments. Go ahead, Kristi.
So there's been a lot of talk about data, and I think a lot of our success as a district hinges heavily on reliable, accurate data, and Raquel, you explained a little bit about your side of the data, but, I mean, it's connected to our ESAR funds, RIDE needs to have accurate data, our budget goals, school improvement plans are connected to reliable data. So my question is more for Gina. What data are we using besides the state testing, because that's such a small part, and not always accurate or really that reliable? What other data are we using? There's, I have a few questions, so I'll, do you want me to just stop with what data?
Yep, and I have a clarifying question, Kristi. So when you say, which data are we using, do you mean specifically when we apply for these grants? Or when we do school improvement?
All the way around.
Okay. So Rhode Island Department of Ed with their accountability laws, like how we get scored on their report card, is strictly by state assessment.
Okay.
So that's one of the pieces, and that's, that is the metric that we do have to use. That is how we are graded, and that is how we have to report out to them. We also have to report out that we're closing these opportunity gaps between different student groups. So if I
And those opportunity gaps are purely based on the state testing?
Yes.
Okay. So my next question would be, accurate, reliable data among the schools and within the schools? I think a lot of that has to do with doing data collection among the teachers, like with fidelity of how they're assessing kids and getting their data based on student outcomes, because if we're just using state testing, I mean, that's not a well-rounded, obviously you know, approach to assessing student outcomes.
I can speak to that if you. So one of the district goals is actually to have a comprehensive, balanced assessment system, and the target date is by 2024, and so one layer of that, that summative, is our state assessment data. The other piece, again, required by the BEP is to have universal screeners for math, ELA, and social-emotional. And last year was our first year transitioning to Fastbridge. You may have heard us speak about STAR before, and what the pandemic forced us to do is look for a universal screener that we could actually deliver remotely. So what we are also looking at at the district level, and as a matter of fact, tomorrow, the winter screener closes for K, it's K-12, so every student is taking a math and ELA and a social-emotional screener. And on Tuesday, what I will be doing with the principals is we'll be going through a data analysis protocol, looking at this screening data, looking at their school improvement plan, and then what other information do we have? Because it can't just strictly be that. What's, take a look at big discipline referrals, attendance data, what formative assessment do your teachers already have? So then the next layer, which would be next school year, is building common assessments that are aligned to the standards. So you are absolutely right, Kristi. Using one data point really isn't going to give us all the information we need. Unfortunately, that is the data point that RIDE does use when they grade us, and that's our school report card, but that is one of the systems we're building. And yes, teachers are giving all kinds of assessment. Do we know they're consistent across the districts so that we actually have comparable data points at the same time? That's what we're building.
Okay. And then my next question would be, when we talk about learning loss, which, with this data, and we talk about units missed, and that's why we're getting certain teachers, is there communication between the elementary moving up to the middle? Because we have teachers communicating within buildings, but then we have our end-year students in elementary school transitioning to middle, and our end-middle school students transitioning to another middle school and then to a high school. So did, for example, if an eighth grader is struggling with learning loss based on COVID or, you know, whatever it is, and those units of study have been identified, now when they go to ninth grade into the high school, are these teachers aware of what these missed units of studies are? And can they back up what they're doing based on that? I mean, they can. How will they know, I guess is the question.
So I can speak to that. So any student that is not performing on grade level would get a personalized plan, and that's housed in Power School, let's say, its data warehouse. So if they're struggling in math, it could be the teacher, it could be an interventionist, they open up a personalized math plan or a personalized literacy plan. It could even be for behavior. Those plans are housed in the system. Within, I'm going to say in about a week or two, our summer program, our leads of the summer program, which are teacher-led, will be pulling down the data from Power School to see who has these personalized plans, and that's going to drive the support for the summer. Over the summer, those plans are going to be added to. So as the student does move up in those transition years, that data is housed there.
And then one last question. If students aren't going to or can't for some reason participate in the summer program but need that and their needs have been identified, will the parents have access to what the units of study or what they're behind in, so if they can, they can provide that support? Not at, you know, in their own, in their own way, but they at least have that information telling them if they were to go to summer school, this is what they'd be getting because this is where they're behind? Does that make sense?
It does make sense. And I don't want to speak to specifics, because I haven't spoken to the principals yet, but there are some preliminary plannings happening, because there are some online services that we could purchase that complement the work, the programs that are happening during the school year. And then also to speak to that, another goal that I have by the end of this next school year is to transition our starting and end dates for our educational technology programs that we have. Right now, they're not all expiring at the same time. I'd like to see them all expire in August, so that way when a student leaves their grade level, they have access to that same platform until August. So we started that transition this year, so I've been partnering with the Director of Technology and also with principals with that. So there is, there's some progress there, but communication has not been sent yet, as I haven't planned with the principals yet.
Thank you.
Any other school committee members like to comment on her question at this time? Go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you. Looking at the information tonight, much of it is a work in progress, and again, acknowledging the work that has happened to get to this point. I know it's not in our slide deck, but in our packet, in our binders, and I'm not sure if everyone has access to that, we look at projected revenue pieces. On that page, I think it's packet, page 43, talks about our projected enrollments. And because so much of this spending or revenue is enrollment-driven, we, and again, hearing what was said tonight, there are areas where we cannot make changes and have contractual agreements to maintain. Enrollment really is that piece that will give us more information, perhaps by the next meeting date, of where we are. Do we have any more current numbers on enrollment of where we are? And how do we compare to that last column for projected, particularly for incoming students, such as those pre-K courses that we're not sure of yet, numbers, and our kindergarten enrollment? I don't know who might answer that, but I'd love to know if we don't have those numbers, when we might see them, and if that will impact our budget.
So I can talk a little bit about page 43, which is in our budget summary, and that is looking at, again, there are many different data pulls that come forward, used for many different purposes, because, you know, sometimes Rhode Island Department of Education doesn't make it easy. So this one is residential average daily membership. And when you're looking at the projections, what the funding formula is based on is the prior year. So when you're looking at this, that's what we talked about before. So the projected enrollment right now is, again, for residential average daily membership is 2,792. That is based on March 21 data. The March 20 data is 2,918 students. If you're asking what we are right now with residential average daily membership, it would be 2,680. So when I talked about that in the presentation, you're looking at a reduction coming down. It really depends on the date that RIDE pulls the data. I don't expect it to change very much. Residential average daily membership takes into account students that attend a state school. The money comes in and then is paid out to what state and charter, school of choice, that is counted in, it's residential, and then the money goes out. So it's a different data pull than it would be for actual enrollment in the school district. I just want to make that aware, it is residential average daily membership versus actual membership and maybe, or enrollment, I should say, which is different than what we're talking about. Again, it does take, again, an average of students that are enrolled over a point of time. So that's a data pull specifically done for the funding formula.
And the enrollment snapshot is being shared tomorrow, actually, as that's part of that update for the school committee meeting. I just don't have the exact number off the top of my head. I did not, I'm sorry. I didn't check in with my staff before I came.
Well, I see you had your hand raised before if you wanted to ask any more questions. No? Any others? Oh, Kate?
I just jotted down, while you were discussing the special ed expenditures must equal the previous year as per federal mandate. So when the number, the federal aid coming to us by, for special ed, we go by the prior year's dollar number? Can you just clarify that point? Because if we have less expenditure this year, but we're still being charged for last year, how does that work?
All these good questions that I will try to answer that are somewhat complicated. For special education, you have to pass one of four tests. The four tests are, two are per pupil and two are total. You can either spend total dollar amount that you spent in the current year and last year, or total dollar amount, local and federal, that you spent last year, and this is not revenue, this is the expense side. So if we're spending $10 million in general fund and $2 million in federal, we have to spend that amount this year or more on students, or we do the shift of per pupil. So number of students divided by local expenses, or number of students by local and federal, and then we get to deduct certain exclusions. So if a student had, I'll give you an example, if a student had a high-cost need, so if in the prior year, a student needed nursing services, but they didn't need them this year, that is allowable deduction. But if we chose to lay special education staff off, that is not an acceptable deduction. So they would say that that is a choice, and that total dollar amount still has to be spent on students. So you're looking at the data pull of number of students and the dollar amount that you spend on those services.
So even, so say the student was a senior, and it was a high-cost special ed, so it was $200,000, and that person graduated, do we still have to spend that, or include? Do we still have to spend that, or include that $200,000?
No, those are always, that's a good question and a good point. But we always report out students. That's the first thing we report out. Number of students that lead, high-cost, graduated, transitioned out, we can deduct those. But when students leave, students come in. So we're always watching that. There are two times you have to meet. Maintenance of effort is when you budget and when you expend at year-end. So there's two data points that you need to do. You'll, you won't get federal funds unless you meet that threshold of budgeting for maintenance of effort. So that's a different kind of assumption that you make. And then you're constantly watching it to make sure in the end, are you actually meeting it? And, you know, you go through it with a fine-tooth comb in the end, making sure, because there's so many variations that you make. It's not only like, oh, student A, you provide the, you know, the SACID number. They're very specific on what you need to report. So it is something that is, because it's federal,
Just explain what the SACID number is. I know what it is, but I'm not sure anyone else in the room does.
It's a unique number assigned to each student.
Any other final questions or comments from the school committee members? All right, before we conclude, I'd just like to say thank you to Gina, Raquel, Mr. Superintendent, very fine job. We appreciate the presentation, very articulate in the questions, or responses to questions that we've had. We look forward to receiving the fiscal impacts, Stephen, as it relates to the redistricting consultants. And we hope to have that prior to the public hearings and prior to final adoption of the budget. And thank you for everyone's time. And that concludes Budget Work Session Number One. Doral, we announced at the beginning of this meeting that because we did not advertise that there would be solicitation of comments, that we would not do it at this meeting. We respect your thoughts, and you'll have plenty of opportunity to speak. We just believe it wouldn't be fair to have a public hearing if we had not advertised it. People may have placed reliance on what the agenda says and may have not showed up for that reason.
Rory, would it be possible, not tonight, but at subsequent meetings, to just include it? Because we could always add, for discussion purposes, public comment to a meeting. But if we could proactively add it? Because I know that people showing up. So if we announce it, maybe other people would show up and participate and give us feedback. It's a very unique time right now. I mean, people are worried about $5 a gallon gas. They're looking at the value of their homes skyrocket.